Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our regular Town Board meeting tonight, March 28th. Would everybody please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to make a motion to approve our prior minutes of March 14th, 2016. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'll make a motion to approve our prior minutes for our special Town Board meeting of March 17th, St. Patrick's Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I'd just like to say that that special meeting was a -- and thank you for coming. I'm glad that we had the quorum. It was a special Town Board meeting in conjunction with the Planning Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals, our land use attorney, our planner, and some members of the CAB and other interested parties to discuss 63 housekeeping -- we're calling them housekeeping amendments to our town zoning code that the Zoning Task Board put together. And it's going to help residents with things like permitting for generators because generators were no longer be considered accessory buildings. I think there's great and unanimous approval for all of these minor changes. None of them are very -- sorry? Well, they're nothing controversial. It's to make the zoning law easier to both oversee and administer by our statutory boards and zoning enforcement officer and for our residents. There are other things in the future that we will be talking about that might have a little bit more substance, but these are housekeeping. So our next plan -- our next process for this is that I will make sure that the revised draft is still on the website. I will ask that anybody, any members of the public who have comments, send them in, address them to me, and everyone in the zoning review group and all boards, our board, the Planning Board, and the Zoning Board of Appeals will get copies of them. We -- the three -- the two attorneys, John Lyons and Warren, will be meeting with Art Broad to go over any changes that were brought up by the public. We will have one more meeting by the zoning task force, which is myself, Melanie Moore, who's the Chair of the Planning Board, Scott Bergen, who's the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeal, Sharon Schrader has come to some meetings, Ed Roberts has come, John Lyons, Warren Raplansky, and Art Broad, our planner. We'll have one more meeting and then a final presentation to the Town Board where we'll open a public hearing and accept public comments. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. So look for the revised draft on the Town website, and please feel free to send in your comments. I'd like to make a motion to continue the public meeting. We have a public hearing open for a local law to be numbered of 2016. It's entitled "A Local Law Repealing Chapter 125-61 of the Town of Rhinebeck Code." It essentially repeals our green building code. And we've talked about why we want to repeal this because the standards for the state are very high and we don't want to force residents into a costly process for adhering to something which they seem to be doing naturally and is in their best interest. I'd like to hold it open for our next -- until our next Town Board meeting, which is the 11th of April, by which time we should have received comments from the Planning Board and the Conservation Advisory Board, and we can close the hearing if we like and vote on it. The county has weighed in and has said that it is a matter of public concern, so they have no comments. May I have a second to hold over the -- or continue the public hearing for this local law until our April 11th meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I have a couple of announcements, and then if anybody else does, that would be great. First announcement is that our annual children's fishing contest and the stocking of the Landsman Kill is taking place next weekend on Saturday and Sunday, the 2nd and 3rd of April. The stocking happens in the afternoon Saturday here in the village, so there will be traffic. And the kickoff for the fishing contest is at 6:00 in the morning with a breakfast at the Legion and then fishing after that. So that's a great event, and it'll be happening next weekend. Summer camp registration and other activities is on our website. It's rhinebeck-n-y.gov, or you can go to myrec.com. And you should, if you're interested in signing up for swim lessons for your children or somebody else's children, now's the time to do it because all classes are getting filled up. Oh, here's a nice one. I don't know if remember last meeting or the meeting before, we had resident Ray McCann come before us. He's a resident of Slave Quarry Road, and he had an issue with the telephone poles all over his property. And we sent a letter out to Frontier and to the Public Service Commission. And Walter Cotter, who's a Rhinebeck Village resident and also the regional manager of this area, very proactively and kindly reached out and met with me about a week ago with the area engineer Sue McDermott. They couldn't have been nicer or more proactive. They told me that they now have a letter of agreement in place with Central Hudson and that they will be addressing immediately three areas of concern. The one on Mr. McCann's property, where they looked at it and said, yes, it's a mess. There are double poles all over. Also here by the fairground on Route 9, if you drive by, you'll see that there are big Central Hudson poles and smaller Frontier poles, and then on Hook Road, upper and lower hook. They also said, any other problems, let them know immediately, and they'll take care of it. But as I said, they could not have been more proactive and just really easy to deal with. So I want to say thank you to Walter Cotter and Sue McDermott for their help with this matter. I'd let Mr. -- I'd let Ray know what's going on. So that's good. Couple more things. Van den Berghove Sewer District, we had a little information from VRI, which is the company that does the maintenance for us. The man who's been taking care of it is no longer with the company, but Peter Fadden of the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority did write to update us that the agreement is before the county legislator. They should be voting on it soon, and then we have 45 days to see if a permissive referendum happens. So they are hoping that by the end of this quarter or the beginning of the third quarter that the transfer will take place between the town and the county. So thank you, everybody, for your continued work on that, and it'll be a relief to have the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority taking care of the district for us. Let me see, for Frontier, Van den Berghove, summer camp, I think that's it for me. Let me just look at it in case any -- oh, I do have one other thing under liaison reports. Does anybody have any announcements or -- okay.
Gina Walker-Fox has to resign position on the Board of Assessment Review to work on her new role as Village Trustee, and so we thank her for all of her service. We wish her well in her new role, too.
Yeah. Oh, thanks. So we need another member for the Board of Assessment Review.
We need another member.
Okay. Quickly.
Quickly.
All right. And you'll speak to the Chair of the --
The Chair Jenkins.
Steve Jenkins. And speak to the clerks. They'll know how big the term -- you know, what the term limit is. Okay, thanks. Does anybody have any committee reports or liaison reports?
Let me talk -- give you an update on the IT stats.
Okay.
Just to bring everyone up to date and give you a little history. In 2013, the Town Board and the Village Board agreed to apply for a grant from the county to consolidate the IT infrastructure, the computers and data and so on. The goal was to increase efficiency and data security and reliability and the like, and also reduce costs. The design that was proposed was to have all the servers in Town Hall, they're actually been installed, they're sitting behind this curtain, and not have any data on people's desks, rather have basically a display, keyboard, mouse, and a small computer-like box that basically simulated a PC, but all the data and all the operations are basically in the servers on the stage here. The village is connected via fiber optic connection. There's to be one internet connection from Town Hall that would be shared by both the Village Hall and the Town Hall. The data would be backed up from here for everyone, and the data would be kept separate between the village and the town. All that's been installed, and in Town Hall, there are 14 workstations basically that are these so-called thin clients, basically a data-less computer that simulates a Windows environment. But there's no data on anybody's desktop here, so people can't install their own programs, people can't play Solitaire, people can't walk off with data, which is the whole idea. The village has not signed up to move in that direction quite yet, although lately we've got an agreement or re-agreement since it's a different regime over there. They've lately agreed that the direction I just described is correct, but they've got a ways to go to get there. So we're in the midst of negotiating with the vendor that they have, who is different than the vendor that supports our equipment. The goal basically is to have them share the cost of the central server and use -- and the cost of centralized backup, the sharing of the cost of the internet connections and so on, which they have yet to do. And probably the most important thing is to get down to one vendor because having two vendors is ridiculous because now you'd wind up with people pointing at one another and saying, no, it's not my stuff, it's your stuff, which happens all the time when there are boundaries that are a little bit fuzzy between what one computer does and what the other computer does. So we're in the process of working that out, and I think the next step, we're having a meeting with the county who provided the funding for this, and the next step will be to put together a detailed plan on having the village get on board.
Yeah, I want to thank the County Department of Planning, Owen Rafter, who administers the grants. He's been helping us negotiate with the village to get a signing on the IMN and to have us bring this project to a close. And here at the town, I have to reiterate that we're really happy with the tech grant. It did exactly what we wanted it to do, you know, maintained a centralized server and all of our information in one area that we share. We have full -- you drop information into folders instead of running up and downstairs, and people can work on things. So it's been successful, and we hope with Owen and the county's help that we'll get the village to join in finally.
Yeah, like you said, they would.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
I have a question that came to me just this afternoon from Suzanne from the Cemetery Committee, and they budget $3,000 for a burial car for their natural burial ground, and they're getting ready to purchase it. But Suzanne, after speaking with the burial car company, learned that actually it's cheaper for us to buy -- they only get the $3,000, but for less than $1,000 more, it would come with a finish which is supposed to guarantee that it lasts a lifetime. And right now, what happens is if they buy the unfinished, Roger -- or not Roger, Gary has to keep restaining it over and over and over again, and it just seems to defeat the purpose. It's like for the extra money.
What is it, like a wheelbarrow or?
Yeah, this is what it looks like. It looks just like a wheeled wagon.
Oh, beautiful.
Yeah, it is really beautiful. But if it's stained and sealed, it's --
Sort of like a kitchen cabinet, yeah, baked dough or something.
Yeah, so she's like, you know, I mean, pay the extra money and have it stained and sealed. And it's like $700 plus delivery, so the estimate with everything included, and it's actually a huge savings because they're also giving the Cemetery Committee a big discount. What would ordinarily be $4,549, the total with shipping and everything, would be $3,999.
Well, so it's just a little bit --
So it's like $1,000 more, but it's like for a lifetime. It's like we don't have to worry about Gary painting and restaining.
I would support a resolution. They have their own capital funds. It's not coming out of general fund money. They have their funds that they could use, and there's also a capital project. I don't think this is a capital project, but it makes sense.
Well, if it lasts forever, it is.
Yeah. Forever or 15 years, yeah.
They have to -- in order for them -- in order for the discount to still be good, they have to order by April 8th.
Oh, all right. You want to make a motion?
Yeah, I could.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion.
Two.
To approve the extra $999 toward the burial car for the Cemetery.
I'll second it. Is there any discussion? John, you got it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thank you. And you got the information, too, about the power lines and who to call.
Yes, thank you.
Whether they're power or telephone.
Yep.
And go there before we get Warren involved. I think that'll be helpful.
Yeah, definitely.
Anybody else? Any? I have one update. I think I wrote to you all, but I feel like I have to publicly discuss it. I had a meeting with Jennifer Munn, one of our elected assessors, and Bill McCann, another one of our elected assessors. The Chair of the Board of Assessment was ill, he couldn't attend. Stephen Harder from the New York State Department of Real Property Taxation Services was there. So was our own, very excellent Eric Axelson from the county. The state and the county called the meeting because they are concerned that we are in danger of losing our 100% valuation, and they are recommending that we do a reassessment, a townwide reassessment program, which could be very costly. Let me just read what I wrote. I met with Jennifer Munn today. Jennifer set a meeting between her and I, Bill McCann, Stephen Harder of the New York State Orps, Regional Director Eric Axelson, Dutchess County Director of Orps. Basically, all are concerned with the town's equalization rate. There's been not enough data collection towards a systematic reassessment since 2010, and we are in danger of losing our 100% equalization rate. There's a significant lack of taxation parity between the higher and the lower assessed properties. Houses on the lower end, because of this lack of parity, have a higher taxation burden than the more expensive or higher assessed houses. And this is all from their data mining. All recommended a comprehensive reassessment, reevaluation. This is something that I will put on our next agenda and have Jennifer and whoever from the assessors can come, and also someone from the state and the county to talk to us about it. Something we have to talk about publicly. It would be a horrible thing to lose our 100% equalization rate, and you know, worse than that is this disparity in parity, taxation parity. So it's a costly -- it's a costly process. It could be several hundred thousand dollars, and we need to talk about why we need to do it and what's missing and what we have to do. So I will have Jennifer and someone from the county and state talk to us about it.
Agreed.
Does anybody have any questions about that or? Okay. We'll let them talk about it. I mean, I'm just taking in the information. It's, you know, it's complicated, so. Any other committee or liaison reports? I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2016-082 for preliminary accounts payable abstracts, 50 checks, vouchers, 393 through 447 totaling $76,516.84. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'll make a motion for Resolution 2016-083 for our capital project abstracts. It's one check for $1,800. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I will make a motion for Resolution 2016-084, which is our budget transfers and amendments. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2016-085. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? For the public, this is a resolution approving our hiring for the 2016 season for brush drop-off. Any further discussion? It's a labor of two, be there for a brush drop-off. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2016-086, engagement of expert relating to workforce housing. May I have a second? Is there any discussion?
Well, there's no.
There's the big -- I'd like to table this. I think this is Joe's, and we don't know how much it's for. It's basically, Open Space Affordable Housing has been studying the need for affordable workhouse housing project in Rhinebeck, including discussions with state officials and for-profit and non-for-profit developers of workforce housing to be financed through state grants. And basically, they're asking us to authorize to engage an entity to do a study of whether there is need for low-cost rental housing for residents and persons working in Rhinebeck at a cost of no more to exceed blank. It'll be funded by the monies that the town holds for affordable housing in their trust agency, but there's no amount here.
Right.
So I'm going to ask that we're not voting on this. Is anyone -- it's up for a motion. I guess we could vote for it or against it. All in favor? No?
Make a motion.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to table the resolution. All in favor of tabling the resolution?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thank you. Resolution 2016-087. I'll make a motion for the disposal of non-functioning office equipment. May I have a second?
Second.
This is from the Justice Court. John Kane's clerk, or clerk, has spoken to me about this. This is all broken, non-functioning office equipment. Even though we have policy in place for computers, she'll make sure that they're fully wiped before they get scrapped. So she's asking us to --
You know, just as an FYI, if it's helpful, I know we just did this with purpose officers and moved temporarily. There's a place in -- well, northeast data destruction over on the other side of the river, and they'll destroy you.
In New Falls, yeah. Yeah, we've worked with them before, but thanks. I'll make sure they know. Is it northeast?
Yeah. I can give you the contact information from where it's at.
Sure.
Or you can take it to Best Buy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's lots of options. But northeast, you know, if you're worried about private files or whatever.
They're all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'd like to -- hold on. The next -- it's a resolution to engage the town attorney to represent the town in hearing before the Zoning Board of Appeals on the appeal of Red Wing Properties, Inc. for a decision, a zoning administrator denying non-conforming use. We have been served by Red Wing. They're asking us to overturn or to have the Zoning Board of Appeals weigh in or overturn our zoning administrator's decision that their mining use is not grandfathered. But I'm -- I'd like to ask that we table this, if that's okay? I'm one telephone call behind in getting -- I'm not sure if this is the correct one that Joe wanted. Do you mind if we table it, since he's not here?
I could just have a comment.
Yes, add.
It's my understanding that at this meeting, there should be some kind of formal legal stenographer there to take these proceedings. It's something we should consider to have there. We might want to share the cost with Red Wing or whatever, but at least, you know, whoever's --
Has the zoning board asked for it, or?
Yeah, I think they have recommended.
Okay. All right. So let's table this. Joe should be back for our next meeting. We can make sure this is the draft that he -- I know he was concerned with some language in there, and you can find out about --
Oh, that gracious panda, possibly having him in.
Yeah, sure. Okay, so all in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved, and thanks for follow-up on the other stuff. Resolution 2016-089, may I have a motion for hiring a summer recreation program, setting wages for lifeguards?
Make a motion to do so.
Okay. And Alan, you second? Do you have anything? Take us through this.
Well, I mean, it basically sets the rates for the lifeguards and certified lifeguards. It's a couple dollars for a dollar and change over the minimum wage, but that's what we have to pay to be competitive.
Yeah.
And fair, to be honest.
Yeah.
Also, it hires Alice Cunningham as camp director. She did that last year at the same salary, and because she's a licensed nurse, she's also the camp medical director, so we have all in one person filling that job. We're hiring a swim assistant head coach, Yuka Suzuka, and Christopher Cassens will be a camp counselor, and so we've got the names of the people we're hiring in here.
And I know that Alice recommended these wage changes so that we wouldn't have the issues we had last year with losing lifeguards to other pools and being staffed properly throughout the summer, so.
And so, and it also has her -- because camp activities have already started, it has her being paid starting now, so the salary that she gets will be prorated over six months.
Great. She's doing a great job. Thank you.
As always.
Yep. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'll make a motion for Resolution 2016-090, commencing the local law adoption process for local law to be numbered of 2016, entitled "A Local Law Changing the Meeting Date of the Town of Rhinebeck Board of Assessment Review." May I have a second?
Second.
When I met with Jennifer Munn and Bill McCann, two of our assessors, again, our Chair, Emory wasn't able to attend, but he's aware of this. Jennifer Munn is an elected assessor with us, and she's a full-time sole assessor for the Town of Lloyd. We can enact a local law that changes our grievance day, which would allow Jennifer to be here all day long if need be, and the assessors have asked us to do that. So we are changing our assessment day from the -- geez. Yeah, hold on. It's --
I think it's Fourth Tuesday in May.
Fourth Tuesday in May. We're changing it to the Wednesday following the Fourth Tuesday in May, because if we say the Fourth Tu -- it could precede -- we're -- the assessors have asked us to change it to the Wednesday following the Fourth Tuesday in May, so that all three assessors can be covering grievance day at any time. And I think it's something, you know, that's good to do as a matter of course. Yeah. Is there any further discussion? We're accepting this resolution, but we have to hold a public hearing on the 11th. Am I -- are we voting on this resolution now, John, or are we just setting the public hearing?
You are voting to accept the proposal of the law.
And setting the public hearing. We said here that we would set the public hearing for April 11th at 6:45, so it's at our next Town Board meeting for a public hearing in the adoption of the law. So all in favor of accepting this local law and setting our public hearing for the 11th?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Okay. Thank you very much. Is there any new business before -- oh, we have one piece of new business. I think we all -- sorry?
Town board motion.
Yes, thank you. It was in our folder. Resolution 2016-091, I'll make a motion for a Town Hall use application for the High School Musical Cast Party on April 10th from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Is there any other new business before the board? Is there any public comment on any non-agenda items or anything in general? Hi, Joe.
Hey, we're good.
You're here.
I know you guys have things. We do. I'm gonna leave one of those to you. All right, so wanted to invite folks to a number of things. Gentry Ross and Marshall Sackton will be here in Rhinebeck are working with me on this Rhinebeck Community Solar Project. Fortunately, there's quite a few houses in Rhinebeck, Dutchess County, all across the country that are not fit to have solar on their roofs, and there's been a war, better for worse, unfortunately, as far as ground mounted solar. So a number of us are pursuing community solar possibilities and helping to build consumer interest among homeowners and folks around there. So the next meeting of Rhinebeck Community Solar is --
Well, you know, we're pursuing that on our own as well. We have a -- we have someone from, you know, doing a study for --
As part of the landfill.
Yeah.
Some people have said that because of the VJ that the landfill, that a solar firm may not touch it, but we're trying to build consumer interest, because even if that --
You need the consumer interest to have -- You need the consumer interest to have, to put the infrastructure in.
Because no matter what, where it goes, we're gonna be consumers...
Well, we'll have the study and we'll see. And, you know, it'd be great to work with Marsha and Gentry on it. So they're doing the good work.
Even if there is whatever, leachate or anything going on at the landfill, hopefully sooner or later, there'll be running anyway. Yeah, so Rhinebeck Community Solar, Tuesday, April 5th, 5:30 from here. Having a Conley Forum, no, a public forum on youth services and particularly Camp Rising Sun, which operates in Marquette, Clinton, given a lot of stuff in the papers and the New York Times and the Hudson Valley News over the last year or two, I've been involved with. And so the next sort of public forum on youth services and in particular Camp Rising Sun here in northern Dutchess, it's gonna be Thursday, April 21st, 5:30, Camp Care at Town Hall. Also, Saturday, April 23rd, here at Town Hall at noon, James Graves, who lives here in Rhinebeck, wonderful musician, Fred Nagel, activist musician, myself. We're having a bit of an Earth Day celebration here on Earth Day, the day after Earth Day, April 23rd at noon. And I've launched an Earth Day essay contest, art poetry music contest. And County Legislature Francine Empower from Lockinger is working with me on this to sort of reach out to the southern part of the county. Maribel Pragnow is one of the most well-respected biology teachers around from Arlington is working with me on this. And Dr. Alan Sher here on the board has agreed to be a part of anybody else on the board. I'm trying to reach out to as many elected officials, organizations, teachers, and maybe as big as possible, because, you know, I've been an activist for 20 years, I've been a county legislator for 13 years. There are so many ways that Dutchess County could be better environmentally, that even just across the road, Ulster County puts us to shame, whether it comes to pesticide occupation, moving ahead, employing hybrids, Citizens for Local Power, Community Tryst Irrigation. So instead of me trying to figure out what to prioritize, I think it'd be great if elementary school kids, middle school students, high school students, college students, people of all ages, 100 to 1,000 words emailed to me by April 20th, joeltenner@earthlink.net. And we're trying to get more and more folks on board there. And also, even the jail issue is not a done deal. There was an editorial in the Poughkeepsie Journal about five, six days ago, basically saying it's not a done deal, that as even the folks in the majority of the county legislature pointed out, it's not a blank check, just about $192 million. They made very perfectly clear repeatedly that it was supposedly not a $192 million blank check. And so now, as John Penney wrote in the Poughkeepsie Journal last week, it's up to everybody to try to riddle that down as much as possible. And it's funny, because for about a decade, there's sort of maligned and attacked for the idea of bail reform. And in that editorial in the Poughkeepsie Journal, in that editorial, it brought up bail reform as one of the things that we need to look at, because there's about 20 people in the county jail sitting there with bail of $2,000 a last near city. They're solving that problem. I think that Towne County has solved that problem long ago. That report right there from the Bear Institute just points out amazing, state-of-the-art, cutting-edge stuff that's happening all over the country. For instance, the deal with people who haven't even gone to trial yet, that we're not doing yet. 70% of Dutch County jail inmates haven't gone to court yet. The Bear Institute, the Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce is bringing them out there. In New Orleans, they cut the waiting time for court from 64 days to 10 days. In Albuquerque, for instance, instead of waiting 40 days to get a hearing in court for a probation violation, not only wait 20 days. There's just a lot of simple common sense stuff. And I only just touched on one teeny tiny little fraction of it, but there's a lot of stuff we could and should be doing. And one of the best things to do, frankly, be spending $100,000, bring the Bear Institute here, have them work the miracles and the magic that they've done in other parts of the country. The last thing is, I think it was on the front page, or was it in the Daily Freeman yesterday, you should have been working on. It may seem like it's just an issue that has to do with Columbia County, Clinton, Myland, and Pleasant Valley with the power lines. But the thing is, we all have to pay for it. I came in on the topic, I don't know if that's what you were talking about, but if you go to leadspathwest.com, the quote-unquote Cultural Service Commission has been playing real games, and we are all, in Rhinebeck, Clinton, all over the Hudson Valley, are gonna be spending about $1.5 billion for a transmission upgrade that, as the Hudson Valley Smart Energy Coalition and Cina Cousins group, we don't need. But the Battleless Energy Solution would actually solve it for $650 million as opposed to $1.5 billion. So I urge, there's been so much coverage on the new capacity zone FERC thing, there's not been so much coverage of this. And what people are supposed to do is reach out to the nearest independent system operator, NYISO.com, and the nearest state public service commission. That's it. Happy Easter, happy Passover. Also, just ask people to check out JewishVoiceForPeace.org, because there's an incredible amount of misinformation flying around about me right now. So just happy Passover, happy Easter. Check out JewishVoiceForPeace.org. And that's it.
Thanks. Thanks, Joel.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any comments, questions? Do we have anything to discuss in executive session? I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. You want a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.